Well, we just thank you for another day and we just pray for your grace and mercy as we have this meeting. Just help us to make good decisions that are the best outcome that we can do. In Jesus' name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Everybody got a chance to read over the minutes from last time? Okay, is there a motion to approve the minutes as presented?
I make a motion?
David? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion, aye. Is there a motion to approve the bills?
A motion. Second it?
David?
I'll write over now.
Any discussion? All in favor? Okay. Ms. Gordy?
Yes.
You're up.
Okay. I'm just here because I'd like to address, um, we live next door to Rusty's old burned up house. Um, I'd like to see when something could be done with that. Um, there's animals that are in there and, uh, we have, um, groundhog and a family that are in his garage. Uh, because of the weeds, we get, um, mosquitoes, snakes, those kind of things. I thank, I thank the city for filling in the wells that were back there because there were two open wells, which I didn't know where they were or wouldn't go back there.
We got those filled in?
Yeah. And I was afraid the kids up the hill were gonna be, you don't know what kids are gonna do. Um, and the lawn mowing, uh, that's kind of been an issue too because right next to Rusty is another lot that used to, they used to make or mow, they're not making or mow it now. Darryl won't mow it, I don't blame him because he's not getting paid, uh, to do it.
You say it's right next to Rusty?
Yeah, not right next to Rusty, between Rusty and Carolyn Mordrick.
Right next to?
There's a lot there.
Okay.
South of Rusty.
Yeah.
Chugs up like, like Queen City or...
I couldn't find a number anywhere from anybody, uh, Margaret's got one or not, but...
Have you tried?
I think that was one of the ones, the numbers that we tried and we were unsuccessful and we couldn't any contact.
It was the nephew of Rusty Bieber?
Yeah, yep, yep. I think that was one of the, one of the ones that we had tried.
They didn't get it turned down last, did it?
No, it did not unfortunately.
No.
We got somebody that's got his number, so we'll...
We'll keep on him or...
Yeah.
Do we have an address?
He lives in Canton, I think we know that much.
I know he's in the nursing home, as far as I know, he's in the nursing home and his nephew lives in Canton.
Right.
So, I don't, you know, um, I don't, I don't know what his nephew's name is or his number, but it's been almost two years, we just need to, it's an awful thing to look at every day. And for a while it smelled really bad, so...
Yeah.
Um, we'd just like to get something done with it. If I wanted to sell my house, that would keep my house from selling, I'm sure.
Yeah. Well, we will keep pursuing it until we...
And I, and I noticed that there's been some trash pickup in the yard that was across from Rusty, so I don't know if you had talked to her, but...
Yes.
She's starting to clean up.
Good deal.
Thank you for coming in, ma'am.
Yeah.
We'll keep you posted on the number, I think Donnie might have the number or can possibly get the number.
Okay.
All right, Ms. Peggy?
Good evening.
Are you okay?
Everybody well? Um, any questions on the treasures report? More money came in than went out, that's always a good thing.
Well, that's always the cost.
You mean Roger didn't tear anything up?
I ain't got them yet.
Just giving the change.
Well, uh, you've, you've got the information on the demo project and, uh, I have one and thankful that's no longer a discussion or something that needs to be done and it's completed and...
It's not quite, like, it's close.
The, the major cost is, that's what it came out to, which is a little more than what we budgeted. Uh, I was gonna have you amend the budget, but when I looked, we've got some things in that budget that we probably won't do this year anyway, so for now, I think we'll just let it ride.
Okay.
Um, because there's adequate funds already. But, thank you for pursuing that.
Yeah, now we can, we took care of our part, now we get everybody else to take care of theirs.
Well, it's, it's been a subject of discussion for a long time, so it's nice to see that on the other side now. Uh, you do have a copy of the audit. I have looked at it, it's pretty much what I expected. The last page, page thirty-two, has the same segregation of duties that is there every year. Due to the limited number of people working for the city of Edina, many of the critical duties are combined and assigned to the available employees. So presently, a single individual belongs to the majority of the 80% functions. And then, of course, they recommend, to the extent possible, duty should be segregated to serve as a check and a balance to maintain the best internal controls possible. And... Any city this size, it's not financially feasible to be able to do that.
Because don't they think you need three people?
Yeah, and then you have to do the duties and, and, um... What we have done to kind of take care of that is I have oversight and I look at bank reconciliations and, and I'm, I've looked the reports over every month and I'm, I'm watching things, so...
She's like the third person.
Yeah, she's like the third person, she's oversight.
Doesn't pay her anymore, we just...
But that's kind of our way to, to take care of that issue. So, it, it was kind of amusing, uh, I don't know if you noticed this or not, Margaret, I didn't hear about it. Um, on page four, we have restricted funds and a general fund of twenty-five cents.
Twenty-five cents?
Twenty-five cents, yes.
Obviously, no, I didn't see that.
That, that's ARPA funds.
Oh, we got a quarter to spend from ARPA?
Apparently, we didn't spend twenty-five cents of our ARPA funds and, uh...
Oh, let's go to town and spend that.
I suspect that, uh, ARPA has already rounded that up.
Right, I was gonna say, yeah.
They, they rounded, but the auditors did it, so we'll see how long we carry a twenty-five cent restricted. Kind of amusing. Everything else, um, looked good, so... And if you ever have any questions on these, ask.
Yeah.
And if we don't have the answers, we'll check with the auditors, but, but if we don't have it...
Do you need these back?
I believe she will need them back. She has to keep copies.
After you look at, you guys can look at it.
But, but you have the freedom to look at them.
Johnny, if you wanna take yours home and look at it and bring it back another day, then that's fine. Okay.
Yeah, don't, don't... If you want to study it, you're free to do so.
Yeah, right.
So, I guess everything else is going good.
Alrighty, Roger, better.
I'm here. Hey, you're welcome.
I thought you were just gonna hand it down and not look at it.
Thank you.
This is what we've been doing. Wyatt, uh, Carmine has been weed eating and cutting a lot of small sprouts out of ditches.
Is he working for us now?
No, not working.
Okay, enough said.
Doing a good job though.
Well, good. Good. It's nice to see him doing good.
We shot the ditches over at my mice boxes and we're gonna have to pull all the tubes up, just re-ditch it all and put it back together, because it's four inches off and it don't drain. But we're getting ready to start sealing tomorrow, probably, that truck should be fixed by tomorrow by us, head or two are still in the hospital.
What's, what's the update with...
The one down here at Chad Boltman's needs a, the circuit breaker box for all his fuses, uh, fuse box. Going in's good, coming out's not good anywhere. Cannot find it anywhere. He's called every place or is to call, he's called Ford, he can't get it here. That's, that's, that's all there is.
Chasees everywhere.
He's trying them all. One's got it, but they have to put everything together in the harness and do it one by one to make it all work.
Better than the meat.
Yeah. Mails, uh, they fixed that truck, they thought, brought it home and first day we drove it, died eight times going over it, take it back to mail to get it fixed.
It was back and mailed?
Yes.
Did it do the same thing?
Yep, same thing, died, no power, we'll go, we'll move, dies. You can put it to the floor, when it's running, it won't go nowhere, it dies. So they're checking injectors and stuff now.
Roger, on number twenty-three.
Yes, ma'am? Let me get there. Yes, ma'am? Yes?
What are you talking, constantly?
You know, I don't know, I'm gonna figure that, you, I can get that for you next meeting if you want me to, and that way I can tag you.
That'd be great.
I will do that. I will figure that next meeting and get you an exact number, be real close anyway.
Is, is that something we need to do sooner rather than later, or it's not an issue?
Nope, not an issue.
Thank you.
So you would like to look at two people for thirty days as part-time and maybe sixty days?
Yeah, uh... Yeah, Keaton will be going before long, because he'll be going back to college, but, uh, there's a couple boys, you know, they're working eight hour, ten hours or whatever, and if I could put them on, that would be great. And with something we need to talk about soon is, we're gonna need a person to add to that to get twenty-four hours, twenty-eight hours, whatever, through the winter to hire to pick up trucks, because that's Monday, Tuesday, and Thursday. Monday until about one, and then back takes it to the trucks, and Tuesday picks up the rest of the dumpsters, and Thursday, and then you gotta go dump, and Thursday you fix up all the rest of it. Monday we put the trash back on, so...
So you need, you're looking at maybe two more part-time?
Yes.
Can you fly?
When, and they don't have to be right now, but I mean, when things move around a little bit, I still need a little help. I plan on putting in thirty days real hard and quick, uh, talked to the boys about doing comp time. They said if they wanted to work late, they would work the comp time, do that, take time off. So when I do that, I'll make sure Margaret knows that and I'll tell her exactly how many hours we do a day, and it will take that off for three months period, when it's over, it's over. We're gonna start sealing probably tomorrow, that truck, we're fixing it, we should be done by about nine or ten. We're gonna start sealing these streets right here with that iron bound rock, so...
Do you need those two guys before the next meeting?
God need help for a while, I'm telling you, need help.
I just think...
I don't need them the same time I have the one, but I need them extra days to paint there.
Have you got an idea?
I would, there's three or four applications in, I believe.
Yeah, we had talked about it.
Yes, yeah, we have.
Is there...
Yeah, I...
We can do that?
I, I think we can do that. I, I like his idea of doing a trash truck, just on the days that you need it.
Yes.
You know, that would, that would help.
I think it would help rather than work, yes.
And, uh, I think if you can get somebody that can do that, that would be good, so...
They can get regular metal, rains every day.
Rains every day. Well, we've pulled a lot, but then two extras would help a lot if we had them, we could do our thing and be done.
So we need a motion to give Roger to hire two more part-time?
Roger, I'm for higher. I'm for higher. Aye. Thirty-two fifty. All right, I'm out there doing it. Yeah.
Is there a motion to allow Roger to hire two more part-time guys?
I make a motion.
David, David?
Oh, second it?
David? All in favor? All right, Roger, you can get on that.
I've worked in as little as I can and make them happy and...
Under thirty hours?
Yeah. I'll do that.
So you need two, two extra guys on Street Three?
Yes, it will help a bunch, yeah, it really will, quickly. We like to do it all fast, we get our trucks back, we'll, we'll move them, so...
Are you gonna... Yeah, you, you'll still be here for just a little bit?
Yeah.
Because I'm gonna talk about that compacting thing that you're gonna put on.
Less carb load, you see that there?
Is working on the, the...
He wants to put the grain from the courthouse to this corner where we're gonna hook it. Yeah, we left a hole in the next block down Second Street where we can bring the grain down to that.
Yeah.
Because it's all separating, that's why the work comes up in the road, the next case is...
And they're having water dam, water trouble there at the courthouse too, aren't they?
Yes, and he wants to be able to run it from there where we put a drop inlet on the corner of the courthouse, but he said he would really like to be with us and do half of, pay for everything. Fifty-fifty, that's a pretty good deal really, so...
That solves both your problems.
He's got two out there, so... We'll get Paul Diggs right, see what's up on the road right there and see what we can do.
Toward the tie into, uh, the south side of the courthouse?
Yeah.
Is there any like, right there on the west?
So, because he said...
Is there two there though?
You're gonna dig it across the courthouse, put the grain through there. Water gets in the courthouse, so that's where we want to put it. Where there's no other grain in this.
We're gonna cross six?
Huh?
We're gonna cross Highway Six, don't...
No, just cross Main Street. Straight across Main Street to the west, then down to that drop inlet we put in there, and then cross the cases. That's where they know where your bird is, the water's coming, well, you see it when water's running, you see it shooting up through the road, it's just broken several places. But he said he'd pay for half of it. So we're gonna have to do it.
Yeah, is that, is that where we tried to get Mo Dot to help us do it, they said they wouldn't do anything with it?
Lasted he would, if he could run his grain from the courthouse to that drop inlet, he'd be happy to pay half. It's all their problem. Yes. It's all the courthouse problem, or help us do. That boom mower, he needs every hydraulic light on it, it's, it's old. It'd almost be smarter to buy a three-point boom mower for the backup, it has its own reservoir and you don't have to fix any damn leaks, probably the same price if you buy a three-point for that tractor. It has its own reservoir, they can reach out there the same thing. I've, I priced them, I don't know where they're at, but right now, that Wyatt's weed eating a lot of stuff right now for that reason.
He's being a boom mower for us.
He's a boom mower, but we're taking the mowers in and mowing a lot of it, extra that we've been mowing.
Is that where...
But that's something we need to look at. It don't have to be this year, because I think we can get by, but something we're gonna have to put on the budget. It's a thousand bucks buys a three-point back boom mower.
That cheap, huh?
Yep.
Cheap ain't always better though, Roger.
Uh, this is a good one, I know the people's got it.
Before you invest that new boom mower?
Yeah, it's about good. It's all, it's all, all, it's big.
Alright.
Yeah, making forty would be a hundred dollars. He's gonna have a...
Four hundred dollars, I bet everybody would do it. Dead trees, anything y'all wanna do there with summer day?
We got a lot of them.
Yes, and there's a lot of them between the sidewalk and the road, and that's the ones I've been hit with. Even the Jefferson, uh, there, across from Lexington, or there's a big one there. There's another big one, I can't remember where he is, but there were one and one...
Over by Shirley's, the big one over there on the north side.
There's one there too.
That's a monster.
I got one on here, I don't know where they're at, but...
Some things to take out of the rest of the whole town.
Is that something you guys can do?
Well, between us and Rick Carr, Rick Carr can charge him very little and we can help haul it off and burn it. That would help a much for him.
Is it...
And that's something we can do quickly.
Is it good firewood?
Yes, it is.
We could just start advertising, you have firewood, contact us, we'll be cutting trees, we can sell some.
Really good firewood.
I wanna see you on a foot, Roger.
Well, I wouldn't split it, I'll chunk it up, you can come get it.
We need to check, I think Rick's out of commission for a while.
You see, he's, he's got eyeball problems.
Yeah, and last time we talked to him, he couldn't be around any sawdust.
That's what he says.
Maybe we can take a bid?
Yeah.
Maybe get some hundred people out there?
There are several firemen right now, wanna cut it, so... But I didn't know if you wanted to help me do this or what.
So there are...
I'm not gonna get nothing till...
We're gonna have to help now to tear down a tree a little more.
I'm not, I'm not doing nothing till I get done through, I won't help at all.
That's called winter project, because it's gonna have to...
Fall, it's fall project.
Yeah, something...
Are you responsible? Right away, well, usually, no, I mean, usually it's like, people sometimes plant trees there, but it's, well, in the city right away, but it's their responsibility.
But when it falls in the road, who's responsible then?
Uh, what happened today, uh, fellas could be still there, they're letting big ones down and cross the road, so...
Straight right there climbs, they're all, all ruined.
Yeah.
You know, like, all...
It's storming, you don't wanna do.
Let's mulch it over and we will make a decision next meeting, see what our option is.
Because I'm not doing nothing till fall to help them. If that comes to be that, that's the best I can do for them.
Okay.
Yeah. I think that's all I have then.
Never know, might get somebody that needs a lot of firewood, they would just be willing to come cut them.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, right.
I think that's all I have. You surprise people, say, hey, come over to my house and cut this tree, I didn't have time for it, I'll bet I could.
Alright.
So steel toe boots and stuff, would we decide on doing there? Three year, five year, or instead of do it again or not, or what?
Steel toe boots.
I think a decision was made, three years, five years, or whatever.
Or it was...
Yeah, I don't know that, yeah. Like, one year.
Yeah, I think it ought to be every year.
That's what ours isn't, but it could be.
Yeah, that's what mine is too.
I got one that's, the soles, you just have two years in there, man. So I even think if you went even to two years, I think you'd be fine with it.
How much are they?
About two hundred twenty-five dollars a piece, and that's cheap ones?
Or, or you set, you set a dollar figure and you give them that much, I mean, that's, that's fine too.
Throw towards your boots?
Yes. That's what I do.
But then they might not?
But then if they don't buy them and they get hurt on the job, you're still liable.
Well, they would have to bring a receipt to show if they, if they bought them.
Yeah, they, yeah.
The, the problem with giving them money is they're gonna buy cheaper boots, you know, and when you walk in your boots eight or ten hours a day, you need good boots.
They usually get them at Farm at Home?
Get them at Farm at Home.
We could tell them to go pick it out and send us the bill.
Yeah.
Then we know they got it.
We've been doing, I mean...
Yes. We don't know what time we need to do it, don't do it every year or every two years, but two years will be shot.
Let's say every year.
That's what I think. Except you guys, you just... But that's something they've been asking me about, I wrote it down for me or not, and I didn't bring it up.
What we do on like shirts and stuff, we're gonna do that, they were so often too, since we took away the, the cleaning shirts?
Yeah, that's...
I think we decided on that, because we can save our money on the cleaning bill, we just buying shirts over we can.
How about we need to do that with the budget, Peggy?
I would have to watch. I really can't give them a...
Can we give you an answer next meeting?
Yeah, yeah.
We'll let Peggy see where we're at money wise.
Yeah.
Maybe for boots and shirts?
We can do it next meeting, oh, that's, that's good to go, that's good to go.
Yeah.
We find the shirt, it's got some reflective on it?
Yeah.
Yeah, you remember we talked about that pole, because we did, we got rid of that, and that was the reason why it got rid of, because we don't buy shirts, it's getting more and more time, they get tired.
So that's been a deal.
Yeah.
Is it a little reflective on those?
So we'll look where we're at budget wise and... Okay.
That's all I have.
Naomi? You gotta give us the rundown?
Um, what's been going on?
Yeah.
Okay, um, I've had multiple calls basically on dogs, I've dealt with a couple of them, given a couple of ten day notices, I need to follow up on that. And done the same with the lawn, I've put up a couple of red notices, I think the twenty-fourth is when the ten days will be up. Um, at that point, if they have moved their lawn, the ones that I have been able to contact, um, I will go ahead and do a PC and turn it into Boster. Um, so I've been trying to follow up on the calls, we've had a, um, we've had mostly the lawn stuff that we've been dealing with. There was some trash, um, in one yard that I dealt with, so it's supposed to have just been city ordinances. And so while I'm kind of weeding out and learning the city ordinances, I'm also, you know, having verbal communication with the people, giving them a chance to be made aware. Um, I did work with Echo on doing a series of city ordinances, so she's actually been running it through the paper. Um, I felt like the people that I had talked to, they're facing surprise that they had signed their name to this document, and so I said, well, you know, I can get that when you're moving in and you're signing all of this paperwork sometimes, if you don't have a pet, for instance, you sign it, but you don't think it's gonna apply to you. And so, um, I thought maybe running, you know, an article in the paper on each ordinance that's might help. And I have had some good feedback on it, I don't know if Echo has or not, but I think that people are kind of, you know, oh, hey, I read that in the paper, so I think maybe that's helping a little bit. Um, I still need to get with Roger on the right ways, but it sounds like you guys have already started taking care of it. Um, and so that seemed to be one of the complaints that I was getting, I'd see it very nicely mowed lawn and then it would be like a sidewalk or something, and so, um, that's one of the things, more complaints than the actual lawn was the sidewalks in the area, so it seems like we're working on that. Um, other than that, I think that's about it, I'm just continuing to answer the calls as they come in. Um, I try to make sure I call everybody back. It's a little hard to leave a phone number because I'm calling from my personal lines, I block it. Um, if the sheriff's office is open, I try to make phone calls from the sheriff's office. Um, I've also made them from Twitter, um, you just don't always get the, the call back right away. This particular phone, I don't have a passcode for the voicemail in there, so I can't check the voicemails that they had called, so... We'll continue to check along on those city ordinances and hopefully things are gonna get smoothed out.
The, the news bureau are nice.
We've got one more that's gonna be the grass and weeds ordinance, and then, yes, it's popular, we've got another city that we're gonna start working with as soon as we're done with city dynas.
So have you heard anything about the vehicles, the people you talked to about getting vehicles moved off the property or...
So there was one, um, address in particular that they were talking about a parts vehicle. I did speak with them, um, they have until, I believe it's Friday, um, I will do another follow-up with them at that point. So I kind of again visited with them, you know, on the city ordinances, I'm, I'm starting in soft. Um, so the initial was that, hey, did you know, you know, and then, and now the next step will be, hey, you're in violation and then issue the violation warning and then from ten days and I'll turn the PC. I did visit with Boster, um, that was one of the first things that I did do was go in and visit with him on what city ordinances, you know, that I could actually push through and it wouldn't be a waste of time. And so those are the ones that I'm trying to follow through with, um, to make sure that we're staying on top of those. And I want everybody in the city of Edina to feel like they've been met. And I want everybody in the city of the dynamics to feel like they've been met fairly, and they're being treated the same, and that we're not just signaling out one person because of their lawn. Um, so I am trying to make sure that everybody is being treated equally, and that I'm answering those calls, so.
Could you do a favor and, and talk to the boys down there about the cell line, it's having a drag strip right there on both sides of the corner?
So I have addressed that, and I have spoke with them, I might also make a point to drive by multiple times when it gets dark. That seemed to be when they were kinda doing it, so I actually have a perfect spot where I sit. Um, and so far, since I've been, I haven't had too much complaints, since it seems like it's kinda died back down since I've been back controlling, I did that with the sheriff's office, too.
Roger, may you wanna put him on the spreader?
People the last Friday of the month.
Put him on the paper.
Yeah, so, yeah.
It could be two o'clock in the afternoon, they over there probably have one out, put it out there.
That was another question, Roger, some people's asked about trash cans in the courthouse, courthouse lawn. If there's no trash cans out or anything with theirs, or?
There used to be.
Well, the cement's still there, but there's no trash cans.
There used to be two or three out there.
Yep, they're all gone.
That's, that's their, that's their. That's county, that's their, that, they haven't removed it for going, I didn't even notice, yeah, that's county.
We've talked to Les.
Okay.
You know, the cars that pound, when they're out there, they like to put the trash.
Oh, I tell ya. Bunch of middle-aged men with muscle cars.
I'm glad I'm old.
Alright, there's a request by Rosebud's Laurel and Giff to close one hundred block, uh, North Second Street on Saturday, October eleventh for a vendor fair.
It of course is a ways down the road, but you just told, asking because they wanna send out things to get it set up. And everything, they didn't wanna do that and then find out, couldn't close the street.
Like this street there is.
The block right in front of their business.
Yeah, is there a motion to allow them to close?
I make the motion?
David?
Bring your business into town.
And, all in favor?
Alright.
Okay. Margaret, do you have those papers that Chris sent you?
Paper that?
The email?
Yeah.
It'd be easier to read than on my phone. We did get some good news on the block grant, the demolition grant, the State Historical Society decided they did not want to participate.
Good.
So, Chris has sent a memorandum of agreement in. The memorandum of agreement, this is what, the guy's responding back to Chris, Feeny. Said the MOA looks good, before we can send it out for our OC review, we want to know if anyone, blah, 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 you don't need that. So the memorandum of agreement has been submitted, they wanted a few little changes to it, so Chris is making that, and gonna send that back in. Once their legal team looks at it, they can approve us to start getting the bids for the demolition. So when we send out the bid packets, they know what they, what they're bidding to tear down. So, the State Historical Society not being involved is a big deal.
No, that's a whole lot.
They told Chris, it's like, you know, this is really going a lot faster than normal, and he's, he said, because I call them all the time, and bug them. So they just keep moving it down the road.
Did it, did it help at all that our historical society sent that letter to?
Yeah, I think that helped too.
Okay.
So, but they just decided that they don't wanna mess with it, so. The sidewalk grant, the Tappa grant, it has been submitted, it is in the hands of the DNR now. And they're the ones that write the grant, so we got it all done, and got it submitted.
We got it in there now, this time.
It only cost eighteen hundred dollars to get it in there this time, but it's in there. Um, I wanted to talk, Roger, I talked to him about it at the last regional planning meeting. Regional planning does a solid waste grant, and it's for recycling. Um, a lot of them get like the recycle picnic tables and all that, but we could also check into getting a cardboard baler. Because they do the grants up to thirty-five thousand dollars, Roger looked one up for me, like twelve thousand dollars. We could put it in the old city barn, is that what you said? Is that it's already wired?
Your barn's never used it, man.
Um, and instead of having someone come pick it up and we pay them to haul it off, we can haul the cardboard ourselves. So, the application has not been released yet, but as soon as it comes out, if you're all in favor, we can go ahead and try to get fixtures and submit that into regional planning and get our own cardboard baler. So what are your thoughts on that?
Do they come and, if we bail it, do they come and get them, the bales, or do?
We would have to pay someone to come get them, Roger said he could haul them off, to the recycling ourselves. Because the guys that come get it.
Didn't we have that one that said we'd bail, and they'd come and get them?
Yes, we did.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, we had someone that.
He's someone that's never gotten hold of Roger, and I've talked to him like ten times about it, and he never calls. The guy at High Hope, I can't get an answer out of him about it. And these are all based, the grants are based on how much, what percentage of that product you're keeping out of the landfill. So we could keep a hundred percent of the cardboard out of the landfill. Because we're sending an extra truck a week to the landfill.
Yeah.
But. Roger's thinking about something.
Roger's writing stuff down for I can keep in my mind there.
So you're gonna have manpower to run this baler, if you end up with lots and lots of boxes?
Still hire like, one or two to help, like we do now, that, that would be enough to do that.
And it'd be a thing that people come and drop their cardboard off, we're not gonna go pick it up.
No, just have a billy, where they just pull it, throw it in there, and then we just have to clean it up every day, or whatever.
Was it gonna be like, the one we had, where it was like people were leaving their garbage, and it got a little crazy sometimes? Are we gonna have it in the same spot?
No, we're gonna leave it down there.
Um, a lot of places make, you break the cardboard down before you bring it, so that would prevent full garbage. Or at least curb it. But what are your thoughts? Do you think that's something that we need to pursue, see what's out there?
Well, if you remember the trailer that was uptown, it was full all the time, so I think people will use it, but I, I think it would be better.
If we could get it done with a grant, other than. I think there is a twenty percent match on it, that's the only, the only thing. So if you want me to pursue, I can get with Roger and look at one online, get pictures of it, see what it would take to put it in.
My guess is it's gonna reduce our trips to the landfill.
Yes. Probably by quite some.
Twenty percent.
Would take, make up that twenty percent?
Prob, probably quite some.
Save wear and tear on the trash truck, too.
Yep.
Okay. So is there a motion for us to go ahead and pursue this and gather the information? I probably wouldn't submit it before.
We're gonna do like the businesses cardboard, so.
Well, and some of those, I think we should just leave it for citizens, not businesses. Because the businesses now have this guy from High Hope coming and getting theirs.
Except you wouldn't be able to.
Who's?
Monitor anything, I mean, businesses are the ones.
I just said, I'd throw it all in a dumpster anyway, I'd do it anyway.
There's an O'Casey's, Seventh Heaven, the Mennonite store out here, that they all, High Hope comes and gets all their cardboard.
Good. I won't mess with them.
Well, I can get some numbers together and get with Roger and see what we would have to do to get that in there, wiring wires and doors and all that.
We'd think much get it ready.
Alright, I'll have an update for you next meeting. Do you all have anything?
On the demo grant, is it still open for people to submit?
No.
It is closed.
It's closed. And I did, I did ask Chris, the longer this lingers, he said, we are not in danger of losing that grant. The grant's been awarded, we just have to jump through all these hoops before they release the money, but we're not gonna lose it. He said, you really, really have to be in bad violation.
How long would it take to get another one after we get this one done?
As soon as, as soon as that grant is closed.
Yeah, we have to close it.
We can, we can apply for another, you can only have one CBD grant open at a time.
Yeah. What, if we only had a one chance, they'll do this, or what do you do again?
No, as soon as it closes, we can apply for another one.
If funding isn't gonna.
Yeah.
If funding is, that may be the catch.
I gotta try, though.
This may be a, a one and done thing.
Yeah.
That may be.
So.
Yeah.
Alright, anybody else have any comments?
I have one more thing.
Okay.
The new lake out there's got lily pads up at the north end of it, horrible. I talked to Danny Dale today, and he's gonna price some chemical to see what it does to kill some of that.
Won't hurt the fish?
Not if we do it slowly. But there's a bunch, it's getting.
Yeah, I seen it the other day, when he was driving out on.
It's getting really bad.
Did we do anything when it was last year, or I think we did, no? Tore much trees out?
Yeah, we, we're gonna do more of that, but them lily pads, that's, they're no good, we need to stop them. So he's getting me a price together, they're supposed to call me tomorrow and let me know what that is, I'll bring it next meeting.
Okay. Alright, I need a motion to go into, close a part of the meeting pursuant to six one zero point zero two one subsection three. Hiring firing discipline or promoting a particular employees by a public governmental body when personal information about their employee is discussed or recorded. Is there a motion to go into a close session?
I make a motion.
David? Stacy, now we gotta do a voice, Donnie?
Yes.
David? Stacy?
Yes.
Dot?
Yes.
Rick?
Yep.
We are in close session.
Well, almost, almost.
See?
Good job, good job, you did a good job on that.